The early version of the Grand Forks City Council's Committee of the Whole for whatever day today is, Monday, June 28th, under item one, called Order 1.1, welcome to roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Docler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Bean.
Here.
We have Corum.
Great, under item two, discussion items, item 2.1, Budget Amendments, Part A, Health Department Cares Funding Amendment to the Grant Award. Ms. Swanson, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Sandy and members of the Committee of the Whole. Before you is a budget amendment from the Grand Forks Public Health Department. This is to approve some additional cares funding that was allocated by the North Dakota Department of Health. This will get us through the end of June. We are currently billing out May and June, and this additional funding was because we have a very robust vaccination program right now, and the State Health Department wanted to ensure that they funded that. This will end our cares funding, and we will transition to new sources of funding going forward. So this is really just a cleanup budget amendment, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you, Ms. Swanson. Any questions?
Moved, rule.
Moved by Cavami.
Second.
Second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Item two, Police Department Narcotics Task Force, HIDTA Grant 59320. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. I stand before you, as I do every year about this time, bringing with you a budget amendment for the HIDTA grant, basically pulls the funding that we received in 2020, pulling it into the 2021 budget used for operation of the Narcotics Task Force, of which we're a member.
Any comments or questions?
Moved.
Moved by Weigel, second by Weber.
Yes.
Great. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Item 2.2, Prohibited Animals and Exemptions, 11-0216 and 11-0217. Mr. Bedard, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee. I have before you a couple sections of city code for your review and thoughts on any changes you may wish to make to them. Section of code prohibits chicken, fowl, and other farm animals as listed. There is a provision for a permit to be obtained from the Health Department to have chickens in your yard. There's been some questions with that. I also want to bring to your attention, we have received questions and concerns on bees in the last few years, so if you want to weigh in on your policy on bees, that would be appreciated. In short, when we receive a request to have chickens in your yard, we would hand them our forms to get permission from your neighbor, as well as to fill out how many chickens you want and those things. There is a requirement that you have permission from your neighbors within 75 feet distance. That has come into question on one recent complaint, as it didn't capture just the adjacent neighbor and some of the larger yards in town. Beyond that, we haven't had a lot of permits issued. We also haven't had a lot of complaints, especially for permitted chickens. There has been concerns when people bring chickens to town and haven't obtained a permit, but those have been dealt with. So I'd be happy to stand for any questions, if you would have any.
Thank you, Mr. Bedard. I presume we should take this one. Chickens versus bees are separate issues, and we should discuss them separately, I suppose. Does anyone have any general thoughts related to the chicken issue, for example? I can start, if you wish. I've received several complaints from folks that live in Ward 6. At least one neighborhood, I've heard from three people that live surrounding a home that has chickens. They aren't happy about it. I was actually, once I was informed about this, I didn't even know that chickens were allowed inside the city limits in our community, and had no idea that public health was the issuing authority of permits. And so I've been chasing this for a couple of years now, trying to get an understanding of history, and how did we get, and actually, if Mr. Bedard has the history, I'd love to actually understand, when did we start allowing chickens in the community, and does anyone remember the rationale as to how we got to that?
I'm familiar with when it started. The last code change, I believe, was in 2008, when they took a look at that distance of 75 feet. It had been 200 feet, and that was cut to 75. I would maybe suggest that all adjacent neighbors should be included, regardless of distance.
So, I'll make my comments short. In my opinion, chickens are farm animal and don't belong in residential neighborhoods inside the city limits. If someone asked me what I would like to see, I would like us to add chickens to the list of unacceptable animals within the city limits. Any thoughts or comments? Yes, Mr. Weber?
On the other hand, we've had this since 2008, and we've had, other than the complaints that you've recently received, no serious problems that I'm aware of. So it seems to me, returning to the 200 feet and including all adjacent neighbors would be possible revisions that could address this as well.
Just for the record, I've been getting complaints for over two years on the same location. I believe, again, there are, there are very few residences that have chickens inside our community. I don't, I don't know what the actual, how many permits are there today, Mr. Bedard?
Active permits. There's one that's been issued for this year, and 10 over the last eight years.
Sure. So the people that have the one, I'm getting complaints about it. So, in my opinion, there doesn't seem to be a rush on people wanting chickens, and the one that has chickens, I'm hearing about. So, again, in my opinion, I think that the chickens belong in the farmyards, and the farmyards aren't inside our city limits. But, again, that's just my opinion, yes.
Are these permits renewable? Like, they have to be renewed every year, or is it every five years? How is that done?
Yeah, we do issue it as an annual permit, January to December, and we do get a lot more inquiries than actual permits issued, so I do think needing your neighbor's permission weeds out a lot of permits that may have been issued.
Yes, Ms. Mock?
So, if I wanted chickens, and I did that, and one of my neighbors complained about it and didn't want them, what happens then? Do you not issue the permit if one neighbor complains, or, like, is there a procedure if I do get a permit, and then I have chickens, and then I go to renew the next year, and people start complaining? Can I lose it?
Right. You need your neighbor's permission, at least within that distance, and so you can look at the policy on what the distance is and what that would include. So if you don't obtain the permission, we wouldn't issue the permit. We also review with them that they have a plan to care for them, and that they're not going to let it become a nuisance. They keep their feed in rodent-approved containers, and that they properly handle waste. So, kind of a stern warning to, you know, make sure that it doesn't become a nuisance, because if it does, that issue, or that permit could be revoked.
So, like, one neighbor opposing it is enough to not issue the permit?
Correct.
Okay. And then theoretically, if you had chickens that were permitted in, say, Ward 6, and people were not happy about that, they could perhaps lodge those complaints and not have it renewed?
They could.
Ms. Docler?
Well, I was, Jeannie kind of asked, or Vice President Mock kind of asked a question, but also with permits, in my ward, it's very transient. So let's say you had permission from all of your neighbors, but then someone moved out, and new neighbors moved in, and they complained, would you lose your license in that time, or would it just be possibly not renewed at the next cycle of the year? Obviously, these are all very situational.
Fair question. I'm not sure how that would be handled, off the top of my head. If they had been issued the permit, I mean, they've made plans and preparations to keep these animals, so that would be something that I would be a little hesitant to just revoke, should a neighbor change. But certainly, that's something that could be brought before council if the question was asked. You know, they could appeal to you guys, any decision that we were to make.
For, I'm sorry to interrupt. For the record, I'm not suggesting we revoke their permit for this year. I think we let them have their chickens for this year, and end the program at the end of this, again, in my opinion. Mr. Bean, you had a comment?
Yeah. Mr. Sandy, what was this specific complaint about chickens?
Well, there were a few things. First of all, although they are an adjacent neighbor, they weren't notified, because they weren't 75 feet. And there is a noise issue, not because of the chickens, but because we do have domestic animals in our community, and the domestic animals that are running around the backyard don't take kindly to having chickens there. So there's all sorts of noise that's generated by other pets that are openly and readily welcome in our community and every other community across the United States. So, that's part of the issue. Again, in my opinion, we're setting up a situation where you're pitting one neighbor against the other, and if I, if Kyle and I are good buddies, and he's next door, but I don't want his chickens, then I have to be the AWOL to keep him from having his chickens. And that, in my opinion, we're adding, we're simply providing an avenue to have disagreements between neighbors when I don't believe it's necessary. If anybody wants a chicken, move four miles south. Yes, Ms. Docler?
I guess in our, in Ward 2, I'll speak to that experience, because that's who I represent. We have similar issues, but with some of those animals that are accepted, like dogs, barking all hours of the night, neighbors complaining and not happy. They may use the 311 app to complain about it. Same for rentals in our neighborhoods. There's a lot of folks that don't like the rentals necessarily in Ward 2, and they'll use the 311 app to lodge those complaints as well. It doesn't necessarily mean it changes the ordinances that we have on file, but it does mean that they're looked at and investigated by Public Health for lawn grass, or by the PD if they're parking on the lawns, or whatever those complaints may be.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Cavami?
Have there been any circumstances where we have revoked a permit mid-year?
Not in my tenure here. We've, to my knowledge, we've not revoked any permits.
So to do that, it would have to come to council, and we'd have to do that, or is that something that you have to handle administratively?
We haven't had to deal with it. Have to review the code. I, I'm not sure on that question.
So just thinking of the complaints that Mr. Sandy, President Sandy's received, if that was something where it just went to the app, and then, all right, their license was revoked, it would have never came here, potentially?
To that question, and we have had, the other complaint we received recently, we don't receive a lot of complaints, but the person, you know, wanted to do a good thing and recycle the waste and fertilize the lawn, and, you know, we had to have the conversation that until that's properly composted, to remove pathogens, you can't do that. And so we addressed the issue without revoking the permit. What's the penalty for having said chickens? Without a permit, I guess I should add.
The ordinance says that you are guilty of maintaining a public nuisance, and each day a continuance is a separate offense. So whatever that equates to, I don't know what the actual monetary penalty is, but it's public nuisance.
It would be at the end of the code section, it's probably $500 or $1,000 fine at the end of the code section. I don't have it in front of me.
Ms. Docler, another comment?
Has anyone ever reported illegal chickens, just out of curiosity?
Yeah, there have been concerns of chickens that have come to town without a permit, and those are dealt with by the animal control officer, with telling them to remove them within 10 days. Otherwise, they are guilty of a public nuisance.
Well, everyone knows where I stand on this.
No, I don't like the, excuse me, sorry.
No, Ms. Webber?
I don't like the idea of just blanketly denying this. You know, I think I kind of agree with Mr. Weber, but I don't think it's a good idea. But if everybody's on board, where's the harm? But then, I guess, the second someone isn't on board, then where are we at? And then how do we maintain if somebody moves? It just seems like there's lots of little nuances there. But I also don't know that I'm ready to just say, no chickens. It seems like 200 feet and every adjacent neighbor continuously maintaining approval. If anyone moves, you have to get approval again. I don't know. It seems like we could weed this out. As someone that once had a wild hair, and probably called your office, and then proceeded to go to my neighbor and was shot down immediately, you know, I guess that problem was taken care of just by the rules.
Just, but again, the process is, the homeowner has to get the neighbor's approval on a piece of paper. And again, I believe you're providing an opportunity where you're pitting one neighbor against another one, and I just don't think it's necessary for one chicken coop in our community.
But is it, is it city council's job to prevent conflict? Or, that's just a thought.
Sure, perhaps not. It is our responsibility to keep farm animals out of our community, in my opinion. Are we going to allow cows? You want a cow? And sheep?
And maybe then that's a mile radius, you know?
Perhaps.
But we do have pigs.
We have pot-bellied pigs. As far as I'm concerned, we can remove them from city code, too, if you want to.
Yeah, Ms. Mock?
I mean, we do ask neighbors to go to other neighbors for variance and special assessments if they do like. So I don't know if that's quite as big a deal. I guess, I think if we keep it, we should increase the distance from 75 feet to at least 200, or 200 and every adjacent neighbor. I do worry a little bit about keeping it, and the idea that you do get a new neighbor, and then you went from being able to have a permit in 2019, and then 2020, you know, one neighbor can say no, and then where does that leave you? Because, you know, then you're probably looking at either illegally keeping the chickens or fighting with the neighbor over that. I don't like the inconsistency of that. Or, I guess in this case, if you're not sure, I guess I don't know if this particular case of a complaint is permitted, but we assume this may be the one that's permitted. And I would assume there would be complaints next year when they go to renew, based on this conversation. So then, they would be faced with that as well. So is that fair to people, to allow them to keep them until complaints come in? You know, it may be more fair to just not allow them.
Ms. Bean, another comment?
I'm not so shy.
So, okay, so.
What I would like to do is, I'd like to hear from somebody who raises chickens, what that does for them, or a neighbor, instead of us trying to assume what happens or what the issues are.
Again, you're, we're going to ask people to come in and complain about their neighbor?
Yeah.
Ah, I know, I just, I don't think it's necessary.
I mean, we can tell them when their dogs bark, and they bark, and they do whatever.
Sure.
You know, and I'm not sure 200 feet is just going to open up more, less likely to even be able to do it.
Here's a question. Let's, and hold on, Ms. Weigel, one second. When we discuss about having honeybees in our community, under the next part of this discussion, somebody's going to bring up the fact that people are allergic to bee stings, right? It's a, but people are allergic to feathers, too. I know it's dumb, but there are environmental, other environmental factors as well. So I'm interested to hear how people, how people feel about having bees next door, when you're anaphylaxis, if you, if you get stung by a bee.
So, Mr. Sandy, I have two relatives, one that's allergic to dogs, and another one that's allergic to cats.
Sure, I'm allergic to cats.
I mean, that's real life. I can tell you who their names are, if you need it. But I mean, we have that already here.
Yeah, that's true. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Weigel?
I can get a permit to have a duck or a turkey, based on this. I'm reading this, and I can have a pet duck, if I get the permit, or a pet turkey. Ducks have been kept in town, and they actually had a permit from Game &amp; Fish that came in to inspect the enclosure as well. Yep. I would question turkeys, because they can be a little loud. There's a few species that you could maybe list, like guinea fowl or peacocks, that probably don't belong in town. Sounds good. I was just reading this, and I realized I could have a duck or a turkey based on the ordinance as it sits right now, and I thought that was pretty, pretty cool.
Mr. Cavami?
Mr. Gostad, do we know what other cities in North Dakota do?
I have looked at Fargo, Bismarck, Minot, Williston, we looked at them. Fargo's is extremely detailed, as far as the conditions that they have to go through. The application actually runs through the city auditor's office. I think there is a hearing process if you revoke a permit. So we've looked a little bit in what other cities allow, and Fargo allows, I think, up to four chickens per dwelling, or whatever, per permit, I guess, from what I've seen. So I think they all allow chickens in some format, it's just the processes. Like I said, Fargo's is fairly detailed, as far as the process is concerned. And they do provide a hearing opportunity as well.
I do believe Bismarck just had this before their council, and they banned chickens.
I believe the city of Candu, which Candu is a very rural community, just banned chickens because of the problems they're having. That's fact. That's actually fact. Just saying. Yes, Mr. Bean?
Probably four or five years ago, I was in a suburb of downtown Phoenix, and there were chickens in some of these major suburbs.
Other communities' poor zoning policies shouldn't be, have a bearing on ours, I don't, I don't believe. But I hear what you're saying. If you go to downtown Boise, Idaho, there's a cattle farm next to a bank. That doesn't make it okay. That's a poor planning, in my opinion. Go to Utah, all across Utah, the plan is horrible. There's horse farms next to manufacturing facilities. It's all over the place. We can all come up with very poor, lots of examples of poor planning and zoning, I'm sure. Our community does a much better job than that, I believe. So if no one else is going to do anything, I'll make a motion. First time in the last eight years that I have made a motion. I'm hoping someone else will make a motion.
Just not to break that record, President Sandy, I'll make a motion that we, we change our ordinance to not allow chickens, ducks, geese, turkeys, doves, pigeons, or other fowl to be in the city limits.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Second for discussion by Ms. Mock. Thank you.
So, if we pass that, I assume we'd probably get comments from anybody in the public who doesn't like that idea. What would happen, would we, what would happen to the existing permits that we have? Would we allow them to go through the rest of the year?
I think that would be up to us.
Mr. Gostad, do you, would you want to weigh in on that?
I do. I think you probably should allow them to continue through the end of the year, because there's a, there's a permit that's been issued to allow them to keep the chickens under the current ordinance. But it would be applicable for anybody, you know, that doesn't have a chicken that asks for it, or January 1, I suppose.
Any other, any other comments? Mr. Cavami?
Is it two readings that this was?
Well, it has to come to city council.
Sure, yeah. All right, I'm on board.
And perhaps people will come over the woodwork and come to the next meeting. It's certainly a possibility. Anyone else? Should we just have the question? Call the question?
Let's have a split vote.
Yes, let's do it. Do I need to do a roll call? We'll do a roll call vote, okay. Mr. Weigel?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Docler?
No.
No. Mr. Weber?
No.
No. Ms. Mock?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Cavami?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
No.
And I'm a yes. Passes four to three. So we'll talk about it again next week, and this will be great. I can either wait. Do we, are we, what day of the week are we having our meeting? Are we doing Tuesday?
Tuesday. We are Tuesday. Mondays are holiday.
Yeah, so, so July 6. Everyone tune in for the great chicken debate. Okay. Next, honey, honeybees. We are specifically talking honeybees, correct?
Honeybees, correct, yes. There are people who keep honeybees in town. Some people don't like that. There are model bee ordinances out there, where, you know, you can put in some provisions of hive limitations, and making them have a fence or something the bees would have to fly over to leave the yard, as well as provide them water on site, so they wouldn't be swarming puddles. So there are model ordinances out there that you could look at. We can bring them to you, if you wish to do that, or you could prohibit them. That would be your prerogative.
Has, has anyone received any feedback related to honeybees? Apparently, I'm the only one that gets complaints in the city. I have heard from two people that are concerned about, I think they are related, though. I think so. And one of them, at least one of them is allergic to, to stings. So I have heard, I've also heard from a bee keeper in our community that is concerned. They, I think, package, I'll call it packaging, they jar, they can honey and sell it. They jar it and sell it, and as part of, part of their business, they, they sell honey, and I think it's part of, a thriving part of their business. I do believe they have multiple locations in our community where they have honeybees. And so, the only comment, other than, I really like raising honey, and it's important for our business, the only other comment was, if you are going to make a change, if we are going to make a change, bees that are currently established don't like being moved in the middle of the summer. So, similar to a change to the chicken ordinance, they would hope that if we do change the ordinance, it would be at the end of the honeybee season.
Yes, Mr. Bean?
Just a question. Any, I've heard that the honey from bees in your area or neighborhood have certain health benefits to it, versus honey from other areas. Does, anybody have any knowledge of that?
Yeah, due to their, you know, local plants and local pollens, there could be some benefit for allergies.
Interesting. I, yes, Ms. Docler?
I feel like we talked about this maybe a year and a half ago, where we actually had folks come to council and share some of their concerns about bees. It was on our agenda, like, a year and a half ago. I'm wondering if it's the same folks that maybe perhaps you're hearing from, about bee ordinances. But also, I might be. But also, I might be one of those strange folks out there in Grand Forks that I actually landscape for bees with native plants because they are declining in population and we need them, especially in a heavily agricultural farming communities. We need bees. And so maybe this shows my hand on how I would vote, which would be very similarly to the chicken vote.
I, I do think, I personally think if we are going to continue to allow beekeeping, that making sure that the, that our ordinance is up to date based upon what public health believes it, it should be. Mr. Weber?
We, we don't currently have an ordinance about bees, is that correct?
I don't have an ordinance to put before you right now. Minnesota Beekeepers Association has a model ordinance on their webpage. There are other communities that have ordinances. I had, was working with the city attorney's office to start drafting one, but if that's not your wishes, we can stop. So if that is something you want to look at, I could bring that at another date.
I'd, I'd be very interested in, in looking at a proposal. I landscape for bees. I kept bees for three years. My wife is allergic, she was never stung. I knew each of my bees personally. And the, the honey was fantastic. So I'd, I'd be interested in looking at a potential ordinance.
Do you, I don't think, I think you wouldn't need a motion in a second for that, I think.
I think it's just a general consensus, and we'll bring it back to a future call.
So anybody have any issues with that? Does anybody know where anybody keeps bees in the community? I couldn't point to one location, I have no idea.
I, I actually kept bees for a beekeeper. I let him, I, I hosted a hive in my backyard, then he came and extracted the honey a few times during the summer.
Here, in, in Grand Forks you did?
Yes.
Not when you were living elsewhere, but you actually get in here.
You're, you're in town, yeah. It was great.
Interesting. I bet it was great.
It was, it was great for my garden, and I, I did have a, a neighbor complain that there were so many bees in the neighborhood, but it was the wasps she was complaining about. She called them bees, they were, they were wasps, yeah.
Any, any other comments related to, to beekeeping? Good, great, thank you, Mr. Bedard, appreciate that. Looking forward to more spirited chicken discussions. I do know where someone keeps chickens in our community, I do know, I do know that. Item 2.3, plans and specs for project 8365, district 352, North 62nd Water Main from Gateway to 10th Avenue North. Ms. Grasser, good evening.
Good evening. Council President Sandy, members of City Council, committee tonight. We created, if you remember last council, we created the assessment district for this project, and this is really just the next step in the special assessment process in which we approve the plans and specs. We'll go out for bids.
Any comments, questions, move approval? Moved by Cavami? Second by Veen? Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Grasser. Item 2.4, award bid for project number 8096, district number 569, swale improvements adjacent to Breezy Hills Cove. Mr. Danielson, good evening.
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. So what I've got before you is the swale improvement project over in the Sunbeam Edition. This was brought up the last council session for plans and specs, and last Thursday, we received bids for the project, and this project is just removing the vegetation and sediment and regrading the swales in the area to reestablish positive drainage. So we received a total of five bids, and all five were open and read aloud. The bids ranged from $28,300 approximately to $68,700. The low bid was from a contractor by the name of Sullivan Construction. They're out of Dickinson, North Dakota, and it's not a contract that we've had the opportunity to work with in the city yet. So we're in the process of just communicating with them, making sure they've got a solid plan, making sure they've got some good references before they are awarded the project. Their bid was about 28% underneath the engineer's estimate, and at that $28,000 mark, it is under the $50,000 requirement to go to council for a typical project, but this is a special assessment project, so we wanted to bring it forward to council. And Mr. Gostad, maybe you can clarify on that. Do special assessment projects have to be brought to council regardless?
It's my understanding they should, they should be, yes.
And that, that was our understanding as well. So knowing that, we are looking for council action, and our staff recommendation is to award the contract to the low bidder, Sullivan Construction, in the amount of $28,281.73, contingent on our verification that they are qualified to do the work.
Mr. Cavami, any thoughts?
Move approval, great job. Five bids is awesome. I think that to even get people from out of town, I think that's showing that we're doing our due diligence to get people out there and bid on our project, so thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cavami, is there a second? Second by Dockler. Any other comments? Hearing none, yes, Ms. Mock?
If something would happen with that Sullivan Construction, does it just go to the second?
Yeah, we would like to go down to the next lowest bidder.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And item 2.5, environmental document for project 8228, reconstruction of Fourth Street from Demers to First Avenue. Mr. Danielson?
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. So this is again North Fourth Street reconstruction project from Demers to First Avenue North. This project's been proposed to be reconstructed utilizing about $1.6 million of federal funding through the Urban Grant Program, and one of the requirements for utilizing federal funding is that you have to have an environmental document to go with the project, and for this project, the environmental document is a documented categorical exclusion, or just a CAX is what we usually refer to it as. And this document kind of goes over, the project needs just a general description of how the project is going to fold out, public comments, different alternatives that were considered, and the document has to include the owner's approval of the concepts that are presented, as well as the owner's desired alternative for the project, and once we approve it, it goes on to the DOT and Federal Highway. And for this project, you will recall that at the last council cycle, it was decided that the alternate for reconstruction would be reconstructing the road with parallel parking on both sides of the street and the curb extensions included. So for alternatives that we have for this document, all we have is the no build and the reconstruction alternative. At this point, the construction estimate is about $2.23 million for the construction, and staff's recommendation at this point in time is to approve the documented CAX and select the alternative B, which is reconstruct the road.
Any questions for Mr. Danielson? Yes, Mr. Veen?
Moved.
Moved by Veen? Second by Mock? Any other comments?
I have one question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Veen, can you use your microphone, please, sir?
Is, it seems like downtown has been under construction for like three or four years now. Is this kind of the last of the downtown construction projects for the foreseeable future? Al, you're, you're shaking your head.
Do you want to take that one out?
You can take a shot at it. I think one of the, one of the game changers here is, is the governor's got a, a main street initiative in which is specifically target dollars into the downtown areas, and it's been a very successful program to multiple communities in North Dakota. And I think until that, as long as that program exists, we have specific monies available to that targeted area, and so I think it'll be ongoing. We are doing a more measured pace than we have in the past. You know, one of the comments we had from, from downtown is when we did Third Street, we probably bit too big of a chunk off there, and, and, you know, between what happened with Demers Avenue and Third Street, it's very disruptive to the, to the, you know, community, the business there. So we're looking at taking a more measured approach, maybe doing one or two blocks at a time, but, I mean, I, I see the program itself continuing, and matter of fact, we're going to probably be doing some amendments in association with the, with the beacon, some of the other, you know, downtown, we, we may add in like First Avenue and stuff in, in some of the options that we bring in this fall. It'll be another set of, of alternative projects to bring in this fall.
Any other, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Danielson.
Second.
Moved by Weber, second by Weigle, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign for adjourned, thank you.